Good evening. Today is Tuesday, September 24th. Planning zoning commission meeting. We have a public hearing tonight and a general meeting at the end, which is really nothing. I was kind of excited. We had a big fat packet this week. A lot of stuff. We're going to rip through it, though. First item on our, pretty simple. First item on our agenda is a special permit application for the town.
Okay, special permit application number 125F, site plan town of Darien, two Renshaw Road. Proposal to install a new replacement generator to service the entirety of Darien Town Hall and Mather Center during power outages and emergency events, and to upgrade and relocate an existing transformer, and to perform related site development activities. The new generator is to be installed along the south side of the existing building, intersection of Renshaw Road and Park Place. The transformer is to be moved slightly to the south of its current location also, along the south side of the building to accommodate the generator. The subject property is located at the northwest side of Renshaw Road, approximately 1,100 feet northwest of its intersection with Boston Post Road, and is shown on assessors map number 41 as lot number 85, R1/3 zone.
Just for your education, George, we typically always put town issues first.
Sounds fair.
Try to get them in. Tonight, it's a pretty simple application. We have Mr. Ed Gentile here, going to present the application. We read your project. It looks like you're just replacing the existing generator on this south side of the building, which I press by every night, with a new big one.
That is correct.
Okay. Pretty straightforward.
We would hope so.
I would just give us the overview, and hopefully we'll be happy and get you out of here.
Ed Gentile, Director of Public Works, town of Darien. Thank you for having me here tonight. Keep it as brief as you'd like it.
That'd be great.
Just a quick, we do have an existing generator here in town. It covers a very, very small portion of the town hall, in the town hall only. What this new generator will do is allow us to generate power for not only the town hall, but the Mather Center also. So during outages, emergency situations, we'll be able to use the entire building, day and night, for any type of services you'd like to. Along with the gas-powered equipment in the kitchen, natural gas, we'd be able to actually have meals, support people if they needed to, in this facility. And that was the game plan from day one.
Yeah, it was a game plan a long time ago. Because they used to put kids, like when the power went out in hurricanes and whatnot, you just have to go to the high school or the middle school. That was not our territory. We always wanted to hear when we built the Mather Center. So this is consistent with our master plan.
It is. The reason we are locating on the south side of the building in that corner, we did look at other locations. All the electrical equipment is currently located there, along with the four transformers that we have from Eversource. They are working with us on this project. They will be removing three of the four, and planting actually a new transformer for us, in the same location. We will be providing screening, fencing. We are going to bury this generator about three and a half feet below grade on one end, and flush with grade at the other, to provide some additional screening. And because we're using diesel, we are going to have that tank underneath the generator. It holds about 2,600 gallons. It's double walled, 1.1%, 110% holding capability. We added sound attenuating insulation for the equipment, and it currently, the design for this generator handles and this entire building meets all EPA standard for emissions for diesel. So we tried to address all of the neighborhood issues, if you will, because of our location of the town hall in such a densely area.
Great. And just from my knowledge, it's very, very typical to have the diesel tank underneath the generator in today's world.
It is. It's identical to the one at the library, if you go in the back. Though that one over there is on a pedestal, we are going to actually put ours below grade for a portion of it.
Okay. And when you say it's below grade, it's because it's grade slopes as it is today?
That's correct. I'm going to try to take much advantage of that as I possibly can, in putting this generator over there.
The only thing I noticed on here, it's a comment, is it looks like on this one plan, it doesn't really matter anymore, because it looks like there were stairs supposed to be there, but I think they're gone anyway.
That was an old, the old school had stairs over there. It currently now has a brick eight-foot-high, if you want to call it barrier, and the transformer, one of the transformers is behind it right now.
Right, I saw that.
That'll be taken out.
Okay. I have no more questions. Jim?
Just a quick one. With all the gas pipeline going all over, servicing the schools and so on and so forth, was there any thought given to?
We did look at natural gas to run this generator, have a gas-powered generator. The cost, it was cost prohibitive.
Okay.
And it's actually, once you get above 250 KW, the difference in cost between natural gas and diesel is quite substantial.
I had no idea.
So we decided to go back to diesel.
This side?
So, sorry, just to review the bearing of, so the fuel tank is going completely underground?
No.
Or it's partially going underground?
It'll be partially below grade, if you will.
Below grade, rather. Okay, okay, fine.
You good? George?
Maybe just take a second to describe any screening you have in mind for the...
I tried to give you what I could, as photoshopped, some pictures of the transition. So we'll be doing, there'll be a wall for retaining the soil, but there'll be a fence on top of that wall. It'll be feet high. And there'll be arborvitae six to eight-foot-high screening across the front of it, and around the side. And I'll do the same type of screening around the transformer also.
Okay. Yep, right here. Let's see a little picture. We're good. Settle in. Anybody come up to us? I think we're square. I'm going to hold off on, you're going to hold off on Karen, but open up to the public. Great. Any questions for the public? Would anybody in the public like to speak, the audience like to speak to this application? Okay, seeing none. Karen, we're going over the first item on the agenda, which is the generator.
Okay.
At the high school. Did you have any questions at all for anything, Ed Gentile?
I did not.
Okay. I think we're good. Jeremy, did you miss anything?
Nope.
And can motion included with you?
Motion.
For motion, we have a second. Falls in favor? Thanks, Ed.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
On the bottom of our agenda, we have a slot to deliberate on things tonight.
Correct.
I'd like to get this one. All right. Okay, the second item on our agenda is a Springdale Athletic Club flood damage prevention application. Jennifer?
Flood damage prevention application number 398, site plan application number 307, amendment to special permit application 17, Springdale Athletic Club, Inc., to Camp Avenue. Proposal to construct an elevated wood deck on the north side of the existing building on the site, to be supported by four three-by-three footings, and to perform related site development activities within regulated area. The 1.53-acre property, subject property is located on the north side of Camp Avenue, approximately 100 feet east of its intersection with Garland Drive and Stamford, and is shown on assessors map number eight, as lots number 136 and 137 in the R1/3 zone.
Okay. To me, this is a pretty simple application, where they're putting the deck at the back of a building. My understanding is the reason why, it's because of the Narohten River that cuts the bracket of the property. Is that why we're seeing this thing?
Correct. It's right near the Narohten River, even though it's much higher than the river, but it's still in the flood zone. The existing building was built in the 50s, part of it before the 50s, part of it in the 50s. So the second-floor deck, the outdoor deck, is above the flood elevation. It's going to be about eight feet in the air. There'll be a new back door created. This is right near the Stamford line, so we had to refer it to the City of Stamford, and to the Regional Planning Agency. So by law, I'm required to read aloud the comments from the Regional Planning Agency, which says, "Thank you for submitting the application. The opinion of WestCOG, Western Connecticut Council of Government Staff, is that the proposal is of local interest and minimal intermunicipal impact. Therefore, it's not, WestCOG did not forward it to adjacent municipalities, and they're making no comment." You also have in your package, the EPC approval.
Yep.
Which is a letter dated September 5th to Springdale Athletic Club, Michael Viti. Basically, the only work they're doing that's touching around are the footings to hold up the deck. The deck's 360 square feet in size. You have the plans with you.
They do some nice plans.
Yes, professionally done. I think it's pretty straightforward.
We also have a sign up from Doug DeVesta, too.
Yes, Doug DeVesta, the engineer, certified that it meets the flood regulations. Becky Zarrow is here on behalf of the Springdale Athletic Club, if you have any questions.
Is this the same Mike Viti as our building inspector?
Ironically, yes. Interesting.
Oh, little red house. You should make you first. Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Introduce yourself, and we'll get going.
Becky Zarrow. I'm a member of Springdale Athletic Club. Have been for five years.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Z is in zebra, A-R-O.
Thank you.
I can say we're a family club. My husband and both of my children, adult children, are members. We're a small club, members only. We're just looking to add a little outdoor space that's usable.
Fantastic. I gave you my overview, Jeremy gave you his overview. Is there anything you need to add?
Not unless you have any questions.
Okay. Let's go to this side.
Is there, I mean, this is for us, but maybe for you also. These things collapse every so often. You know, there was one in the paper this past week. Is there any, in the town building regulations, or anything that this can't be occupied by more than 100 people or...
Great question, Jim, because I asked Mike Viti right before the meeting, of this 360-square-foot deck, it's 12 by 30. Tell me about the occupancy. What's the max occupancy of this deck? How many people can be on it at once? And the answer was?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
And how many members of the club are there?
180.
180, yes, 168.
You have to say the number.
Sorry, 168.
Have you ever had a party where all 168 people show up and stuff?
Never. Never. We're looking to just put some tables, be able to have lunch out there, just a little bit more outdoor space. Right now, there's nowhere to go.
Gotcha. You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Just for, to close a little bit, the building inspector has to inspect it while it's under construction, before it gets constructed. So it's got to meet state building codes.
Yeah, it's interesting that the building was built way before flood regulations and all that. So this, I was kidding with Mr., half kidding with Mr. Viti, that this will be the, in 60 years, since the last part was built, building codes have come a long way. This will be, if there's a big flood, this part will likely withstand it.
The rest of the building won't.
The rest of the building. But the rest of the building's been there for quite a while. So it is, although it's near the river horizontally, vertically, it's higher, and this will be even higher than that. But it's a good question.
Anything you want to say?
I'll go.
Thank you. Anybody in the public like to speak to this application? Seeing none, I would motion, I would, Ed, stay motion to close. Mr. Riley?
Second.
Mr. Rand. Falls in favor? Next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The third item on our agenda tonight is amendment, special permit application, Darien Nature Center. We're going to open that application tonight, and immediately...
Continue it.
Continue it.
Tuesday.
So I apologize. Anyone here for the Nature Center application on 120 Brookside Road, we're going to continue that to?
Tuesday, October 22nd, at 8:00 PM, in this room, room 206 of Darien Town Hall.
Tuesday, what was the date again?
October 22nd. So the Nature Center won't be doing another mailing. They've notified all the neighbors. The notice has gone in the paper two times. And so we'll just continue the hearing on the 22nd. It'll be one of the first items on the agenda, and we'll start right in on that date.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a new business that wants to come to town. Jennifer?
Special permit application number 308, HPH Salon LLC, 895 Boston Post Road. Proposal to establish a salon, personal service establishment, and associate retail operation in the first-floor space formerly occupied by Bella Pietra. The subject property is located on the northwest side of the Boston Post Road, at the northwest corner, formed by its intersection with West Avenue, and is shown on assessors map number 17, as lot number one, and number two, in the CBD zone.
Okay. This looks like a pretty simple application, also, a new business coming to town. We're seeing it because it's a personal service application, a retail district?
Correct. This is a personal service use in the CBD zone, which requires a special permit. There is a, like if you think of any hair salon, there is an accessory retail use, shampoos and other things that they'll be selling for those who frequent the business. In this case, this is the old Bella Pietra, right near the corner of West and Boston Post Road.
It's actually half of it, right?
It's half of the space, right. And there's parking, a municipal parking lot right in back. If you go up about half a level, there's parking for employees, right, I'll call it the utility lot, if you will. And then if you go all the way to the back and around the curve, behind Lampere, there's also some public parking. Across the street, there's parking on Mechanic Street, and in the town-owned municipal parking lot. The applicant is here, and people representing the applicant to explain in a little more detail how many chairs, hours of operation. It's going to be both a men's and women's salon, just hair and hair-related things, hair cutting, hair styling, no nails, toes, just hair.
And there's a barber shop about four doors down?
And I think across the street.
Across the street.
Okay. Would someone like to speak to this application? New hairstylist. I got my hair cut today. Catch up?
Sure. Looks wonderful.
Please, thank you, please.
My name's Alexis Akogja.
Alexis?
Alexa, A-L-E-X-A, and C-I-K-O-J-A.
Okay, so we explained you're going to, you're intending to open up a new hair salon?
Correct.
In our wonderful town. Please tell us a little bit about it.
So we actually are an eco-friendly salon. We recycle up to 98% of our waste. There's no chemicals going in the water. We repurpose everything. The hair gets sent out. There is no trash whatsoever. We are ammonia-free. We have zero waste. And, you know, we're an upscale salon. This will be our, hopefully, third location. So we're very excited to be a part of Connecticut, hopefully. And, yeah, we do mostly men's and women's haircuts, color, no nails, no, none of that, and strictly hair. appointments usually are every half hour, so people get out pretty quickly. We are very low maintenance, so very, it goes a long time. We'll have about, we have five chairs. This is my contractor, so he'll have any more.
We'll talk to the plant if you guys can see it.
Yes. So we'll have five chairs, and about, we'll have three stylists working.
Okay. Did I see on here that you have your other locations in Scarsdale?
We have one in Scarsdale and one in Bedford Hills.
Okay, so Scarsdale's got tight parking, too.
Yes.
You in the Village of Scarsdale?
We're not. We're like right off of, we're on Brook Street. So we border Eastchester, Scarsdale area.
I got you. Okay, got you. Why don't you let us see the plans?
Sure.
Are you good? Okay. Do you have one set?
Yeah, I have one.
That's okay. We did not, we did not see Big Shots next door, because it was in personal service.
Big Shots is a retail picture frames that, yeah, so that would be, just move in if you're retail. Personal service requires a special permit.
Okay, we're going to start at this side. Karen, do you have any questions?
I was just wondering if the member of the public who wrote the letter...
We'll get to that in a second.
Yeah, that was my, yeah.
Okay, George, Jen?
How many employees?
We have six total, but there will be three working during the day, because we have three salons. So everyone will be rotating.
Okay. Do you have parking arrangements for them?
From what I hear, we could get a permit for parking. And then there's some lots that I was told about.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if it will...
It's a little, that, the way it works is, the parking right behind your building is for customers.
Yes.
And then that second level, if you will, which is where good goods and then you go up, is usually pretty full with employees.
But behind is three-hour parking, right?
Right.
What's that other lot up top?
It's a mix of one and two-hour, up by Lampere, behind Lampere. Across the street is the Mechanic Street lot. So there might be some town permits there, not too many for employees, but there might be a few. But they would have to call the town to see how many employee spaces there are, and which lot they're in, whether it's Mechanic Street, Center Street.
Yeah, we're only talking five employees, though.
Right, three to five.
It's not like it's...
And some of them might be off-hours.
Well, let's see. Correct.
Do all five or six work at the same time?
No, because we have three locations, and we have a small staff. We're very intimate. That's why we're expanding, because we like to keep it small and intimate without losing that personal service. And so it's usually three employees tops.
And is there a receptionist, which would be a fourth?
No, that would probably include the three.
Okay.
The, we've had two or three of these in this section.
Kumah?
Every time somebody comes, somebody already in that strip of stores complains that there's not enough parking. Part of it is the number of spaces, and part of it is the enforcement, not having the employees parked down below, and so on and so forth. I mean, is this going to be another one of these where exist, the people who are there now are going to bitch about the...
Oh, the new people? You may complain.
It's, you took away a business that had multiple salespeople in it, and customers coming and going, which was Petre, which was the plumbing store. And now you're putting in another business, so it's...
I think it's a wash.
I think it's a Stephen's wash. Well, one question. Do you think most of your employees will drive? Does anybody ever take a train?
So my main employee that will be there mostly does not drive, so she'll be taking the train.
Okay.
Which luckily is right there.
Great, that's the biggest thing.
Yes.
Okay. You good? Karen, George, Jen?
So just a question about the waste. So obviously, you worked out, I mean, you have to have, right, you have hair and other particles that...
That gets recycled, yes.
So, and so then you have, there's enough space in that? Because I feel like Bella Pietra probably didn't have that.
There's actually a dumpster that's shared with all the tenants in that, all the way from Huntington, all the way down. There's two or three dumpsters in that town-owned parking lot.
We, I'm sorry, we actually send it out, so it's not even going into the dumpster. A company comes and picks it up from us.
Every day?
Yeah, when our boxes are full. We're part of a green circle salon, so they actually pick up all of our waste. Like 98% of our waste is picked up by them. So we will not be using the dumpster besides, like, you know, like food and things like that, because we can't send that in with them.
Very interesting.
Yeah, it's awesome. It's called Green Circle Salons. It's an amazing company.
They make wigs out of it?
They actually use the hair for oil spills, so, yes.
Wow.
Yes, yeah.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay. Did we see a letter from another gentleman? It looks like he's the landlord for the building across the street, which is planned to be, which really doesn't relate to you.
Are they here?
Long and the short of it is, he just is complaining about parking.
Did you read his attachments?
But he's on the other side of the street. So do you know much more about this letter, Jeremy?
No, Fred spoke to Mr. Schaefer, I think right before he submitted the letter, and right after he submitted the letter.
Yes, that's correct. The materials that he's submitted here, I think, are fairly self-explanatory, but he clearly has some concerns with the availability of parking on Mechanic Street and the public lot on his side of the street as well. He notes that the number of public parking spaces has been cut back because of added commuter parking, both on Mechanic Street and in the lot. And he's indicated that a number of his tenants in his building have expressed concerns with respect to the availability of parking for a business such as this.
And Fred, I recognize, you know, you're not the...
Partner of the...
Or the, you know, the landlord who wrote the letter. But when I read his attachments, I note that it speaks about that parking is seldom used for residents and shoppers, and there is parking for 20 cars. So I was confused about the inconsistency between his exhibits and his letter. That's why I was hoping he would be here, and I...
I agree.
Yes, I thought that, but...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't believe he's in the audience.
Parking is never filled during the day, usually empty.
That, I believe, was from, you're referring to the client, New England?
Yes, I am.
This was, this was an application submitted for, this was an application submitted for Planet Pizza in the 1980s. So at that time, the parking situation was different. There were additional parking spaces available, both on Mechanic Street and in the public lot, because those spaces had not been dedicated to commuter parking.
Just to correct you, I think I'm right. The latest, that it's 2009, not 1980.
Right.
It's a 10, yes.
Yes.
It's a 10.
Yes.
And then Heights Pizza.
So we're good.
Yes.
In my opinion, this is across the street. I don't know if that, his building has any parking at all. He's the landlord. He should be complaining to himself.
I did speak to Alexa. One important note, which she mentioned to me before the meeting that she wanted to get on the record, is they have the advantage of both having a front door on Boston Post Road, and a back door which faces the parking lot. And they're going to use both doors, because there's nothing worse than strolling down the street on a nice Saturday afternoon, and the doors are locked. So it's going to be an advantage to them. They have customers coming through both doors. It gives them the flexibility of having people park both in back and front on the street. And as she said, even at the train station on a weekend, you just walk across the street.
Great. The other thing I would add to the application, I don't, I didn't look at your plans. We kind of sort of like when you have a retail display on the front of the building which faces the Post Road.
Uh huh.
So I saw you're playing your reception areas in the front.
So the other wall...
So if you're going to put your shampoo...
Yeah, there's a wall.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
It's Rich Mehan, M-E-E-H-A-N.
Thank you.
Sure. There is a wall, right when you walk through the front door on the left, there's going to be a big display shelving, probably about eight, nine feet high.
So you get this shampoo's going to be in the front of the...
It's going to be on display there, yes.
Are those the rectangles?
Yeah, there's an existing door opening to the other, to the other store, and we're going to close it off and put all shelving in there.
Right here. Because the two stores are connected?
Yeah.
It's, okay. Well, good. Is, anybody in the public would like to speak to this application? Seeing none, I would, I'd turn a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Wait a second.
Okay.
Fallas in favor? Thank you. I bet you we might be able to put this to render a decision tomorrow.
Yeah.
Right, or deliver.
We're next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're all set.
Thank you.
One, two. Why don't you keep this, Jeremy?
Yeah, put it right in file. Thank you.
That's the only one we have. Okay, moving on. The next item on our application is another, looks like another kind of sort of business on 757 Boston Post Road. Jennifer?
Special permit application number 307, Roseanne Hoffman, 757 Boston Post Road. Proposal to convert the second floor of the existing structure to a two-bedroom residential apartment. The first floor of the building is to remain as an existing office space. The 0.25-acre subject property is located on the northwest side of Boston Post Road, approximately 75 feet south of its intersection with Academy Street, and is shown on assessors map number 16, as lot number 14, in the DB zone.
Now, to me, this is a old-style New England house. That was one time its life converted to offices. The first floor, I bet it was somebody's, and the second floor was offices. Up the street, we have very similar things. I think about a month ago, the Fletcher Brothers, they had offices on both levels. We converted the upstairs to an apartment. Me personally, I don't really care if it's apartment or residential, but we will listen to the applicant. Sir, please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, my name is Brian St. Pierre, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the owner of Roseanne Hoffman. As you mentioned, we're looking for a special permit to have a partial change of use to the second floor into a two-bedroom.
Could you spell your last name, please?
St. Pierre, S-T period, P-I-E-R-R-E.
Thank you very much.
No problem. So as I mentioned, you know, we're looking to transform the existing second floor into a two-bedroom apartment, keeping the existing first floor as professional office space as it currently is. It's like, as I mentioned, a partial change of use. The, all the work is interior. There are no additions, no alterations to the exterior of the building in terms of cosmetic or any of that sort. So it's all fitting within the existing footprint. The only exterior of note, that, of a change, would be for the parking requirements. Obviously, we have existing parking for the building as it sits now. There are currently 23 parking spots for the, for the building, which is exactly the required amount that we have now. With this change of use, we are actually reducing the requirement for parking by two spots. So we're going from 23 spots to 21 spots.
I might know if somebody needs extra parking.
We're just right up the street, too.
Down the block.
So, you know, as, in terms of parking, you know, we're actually decreasing our requirement, and still, still keeping the 23 spots that we currently have.
Jeremy, we're seeing this because it's special permits?
Right. This zone, the design business zone requires, if it's a second-floor apartment, and it's a commercial on the first floor, that it requires a special permit, so the commission can look at issues like this, parking. Even though, in this case, because of the size of that second-floor apartment, it's actually a reduction in the parking of the size of that second-floor apartment, it's actually a reduction in the parking demand.
Right, so I bet you, when it was, when it was a residential house and they converted to office, they had to build a little parking, and now it's going back to what it was.
It's shared parking with the adjacent property to the left, which is to the west.
This is ours on the, on the right, and then it's a shared parking with the building on the left. Sorry, Jeremy.
No problem. And this is gonna be, the entire second floor will be this one two-bedroom apartment?
Correct. Dedicated one, one apartment. It's roughly about thirteen hundred square feet, and as I mentioned, the first floor remains office space as it currently is.
Now, there's a sign for rent on the building today. Is that for the upstairs or the downstairs?
That's, that's for currently the whole building. It was just, they were trying to rent it as commercial space and decided to go this route. I think the sign is still up there just for, just 'cause it hasn't been taken down.
Don't worry about it. Jim, any questions?
Access to the second floor?
Yes.
You're gonna have to do anything? I mean, I know you said all the work's being done internally, but is there gonna be a separate access to the second floor from the, from the commercial space or on the second floor?
Absolutely. So, as you see, this is, this is the first floor that we have now, Jim. This is the back parking lot.
Right, alright.
It's currently there now, obviously, the post door is in front. These two rear doors are currently there now. All we're doing is separating the access to the first floor from the access to the second floor internally.
Okay.
So, the, the two doors are currently there, and then obviously the main front door will remain. This is actually a shared entry for not only the apartment, but also the third floor.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I walk in from the train station, I can go in the front door, and when I leave for work at night, I can go out the back door?
Absolutely.
Got it.
Obviously, park, you know, if you have a car, you would park in the back and use the back door. Otherwise, train, you know, you would use the front.
Well, you can walk out the front door and go up to block two ten twenty.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions, first side?
Okay. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to this application? Seeing none, enter a motion to close?
So, move.
Wait a second. George? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, Mr. George Close. It couldn't be two bedrooms in an office. It's a change of gears. Alright, now we're gonna have to slow down the process.
Uh-oh.
We were doing good. Our next item on the agenda is a new house, looks like, on Lighthouse Way, coastal site plan review, and that's on- Is that on Holly Pond?
Yes.
It's on Holly Pond.
Thank you, Wilder.
Coastal site, site plan review number three four three, flood damage prevention application number three nine seven, landfilling excavation and regrading application number four six five, Kenneth and Lauren White, twenty-three Lighthouse Way. Proposal to raise an existing single-family dwelling, building an approximately forty-seven fifty square foot house in a generally the same location, and to perform related site development activities within regulated areas. The zero point five-five acre subject property is located at the southern terminus of Lighthouse Way, approximately a thousand fifty feet south of the Boston Post Road, and is shown on the Sessors map number fifty-three as lot number thirty-one in the R one half zone.
Do you have one more of these? Is there one more of these further?
I have, oh, I gave you ten.
There's three different maps. One's called existing-
I need one, I need one more of those.
Existing, proposed, and then a site plan.
It's colored by number.
Okay, for five.
Right, this is one. You all got that?
Got it.
I got two more proposed.
I got existing and then a proposed.
We need another one of these. Okay, we need one more?
I got one more proposed.
Okay.
I got, uh-
One more, one more.
No, no.
Thank you, George, Fred.
Yep.
Yeah.
Couldn't you number these?
Here. I guess he couldn't get it in on time.
First time, it's the first time here.
First time, right?
First time. Put them in a book. Didn't do that. Apologies.
We need one more of these.
What are you, what are you missing?
Here we go.
Everybody should have three.
Serge, just add the label.
Alright, proposed, existing, proposed, and then the site plan. I handed it to you.
You got it.
Got him?
Got him.
Okay, so those mirror, if you put them existing, proposed, and site planned, that's the order in which the presentation will go. So, Wilder Gleason representing the applicants, Ken and Lauren White, who are in the second row, with our builder Kai Young, and this is-
Can I interrupt one second, Wilder? I apologize. There's a letter in here from-
Rich Jacobson, EPC staff.
Have they, have they acted on it, yes?
Nope, that's a report. The statute says that EPC just has to give a report. Usually it's in the, in the nature of an approval. In this case, Rich has said, no, EP's dealing, EPC's dealing with this next week, but they told me, write up an approval. They didn't even have a hearing for this, and they're going to approve it next week. So, his report satisfies the requirement of the statute.
Okay, so it's been approved by EPC. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the Whites bought this property in two thousand thirteen. It's point six acres in a residential one-half acre zone. It's on the edge of Holly Pond down here. It's fully developed with lawn plantings down to a pebble beach at the water's edge, and it has a magnificent thirty-six inch oak down right above what is a retaining wall at the edge of Holly Pond. There's a twenty-six hundred square foot house there that was built a long time ago. It's four bedrooms, and it doesn't meet the FEMA requirements. The first floor is at elevation thirteen point three, and it's in a flood zone where it needs to be up at fifteen. In addition, a portion of the house, which is colored in the existing plan, you'll see the pink, that's a portion of the house that doesn't meet the setbacks. The zoning setbacks require that we have the house behind a, a section that meets the hundred and fifty-foot width, and that's called out here, and that's why this little section of the house, the pink, doesn't meet the setbacks. The intent, after looking at this, they wanted to renovate in place, et cetera. They finally decided we have to start fresh, so there, and this, and what this map shows is the zoning setbacks are in orange. The flood zone, which is the FEMA mapping of the AE elevation fourteen and the VE elevation fourteen zones are right here. The house appears to be in the AE elevation fourteen zone, and the hundred-foot regulated area for CAM is called out in that existing. So, that's the area where we have a higher degree of scrutiny by you because we're closer to the water. What is happening is they're tearing the old house down and replacing it with a new four-bedroom house that meets the setbacks. Now, we're in the proposed, again, the zone lines are in orange. The CAM review area is dashed blue. The flood zone line is in solid blue, and the tree that we want to preserve is called out. So-
Can I stop you for one second?
Yes.
This tree that's in the front yard, one that's on-
Yep, this one?
It's right on the street. It's-
Yes, there is. Yep.
Are you saving that?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a tree right on Lighthouse Road. It doesn't make this map.
I didn't call it out, but it's right, you can see the stump, the trunk is called out just to the right of the driveway as you enter. You're coming in the driveway, it's right here.
Yeah. You don't get an argument from me that the house, it's time for the house to go.
Yeah. Here's the house as it exists today. It's, this is the view from the beach, the pebble beach. Here's the beautiful oak tree. That's our house. This is the neighbor's house. This is the view from the street at the driveway. This tree, which is just to the right, is the one, is the one that you were mentioning, Steve. That will be preserved. So, basically, the development is occurring where the house is now, and that's the tree, the view of the tree from the back deck. And you can understand why Ken and Lauren said, "We're not taking that down. It's just magnificent." And here's a closer look at it, and so, that's the site. The EPC, when you go to the site plan, not what, we go to the site plan, EPC asked us to put a buffer between the lawn area and the seawall. So, we've got a six-foot buffer called out here with an area where we won't have a planted buffer because we need access to the beach. And the new house will have a large patio out the back, and underneath this section over here where the pergola will be loaded, located, we'll have a garage door, because it's about an eight-foot drop from the elevation of the house, which we're going up four feet, basically. We're going up to sixteen. We have to go to fifteen. We're going up to elevation sixteen for the first floor.
Out of the flood zone.
Because we want a, a, a margin of safety.
Okay.
I mean, FEMA's going the wrong way, and with climate change and everything else, the Whites have decided we want that extra margin of safety.
But just to be clear, the overall height of the house is only gonna be thirty feet, which is at the max?
We meet the height. We're not, we don't need any variances. We meet all area and bulk. Our building coverage goes from nine percent, a little under ten, to fifteen plus.
Great.
So, we're still well below the twenty percent building coverage that's maxed. So, we're not maxing out. It's a forty-five, forty-seven hundred square foot house, four bedrooms, and we have a much more usable livable area. All the water toys are going underneath the porch, which is why we're gonna have a garage door on this side where you can open and close. And it's just crawl space and storage under the house with flood vents to equalize water pressure, and you have a letter from the engineer certifying that. Antoine Ngung, our drainage engineer, has designed the site plan so that all the grading, he's creating small swales along the edges of the property. You can see it on the site plan, where stormwater would be directed towards the edge, but then it's captured and directed towards the back of the property, towards Holly Pond, where it's lost. In addition, because we're in the coastal area under section eight eighty E, we have to treat for water quality alone. We want to eliminate the thermal pollution and the particulate pollution by capturing the first inch of flush in a storm event, and that will be directed into the cul-de-sacs, which we've called out here. And the cul-de-sacs are designed so they don't infringe on the thirty-six inch oak in the back. So, that is actually the capacity of those cul-de-sacs, which are voids in the ground, essentially. We're supposed to have, I think, three hundred and seventy-three square feet, cubic feet. We've got a hundred and sixty-five percent of that. It's like a seven hundred plus cubic feet. So, we've taken care of that, and there's a certification from the engineer, John Hardman, indicating that, he's a structural engineer, indicating that we meet the requirements for FEMA with the flood venting that we have, and that provided it's built in accordance with the plans and the venting is as proposed, we comply with FEMA. So, we need a review from you. The other thing that is happening is the site plan calls out silt fences along the rear of the property and the sides. Those will protect or mitigate any construction impacts, so that until the site is revegetated, we, Holly Pond is protected, and then the silt fence will be taken up, and at that point, there's no adverse impact on sensitive coastal resources. So, we need a CAM approval under section eight ten, a flood damage permit under section eight twenty, because we're lifting the house and complying with FEMA. We're one foot above, and we have the flood vents. We're fine with that, and we need landfilling and regrading because we are changing grades next to the neighbors. And Lauren, do you want to talk about, run up here and just, Lauren has talked to the neighbors.
One thing, just to get on the record, he's gonna need a elevation survey?
Elevation certificate when the project is found that's, would have to be a condition of approval.
That's our, that's our newest thing. You know about that, right?
Not a problem. It makes sense.
Great.
If we're saying we're gonna build at a certain elevation, you need confirmation. We've done that before you issued a zone.
Great.
So, Jeremy, the, quick question.
Hold on a second.
The, the roof then doesn't count, right? So, from forty-one eighty to forty-six ninety-one.
To the peak.
To the peak. That means not count?
We measure on a house, you take the, on a, on a pointed roof, not on a flat roof. You take the average of the highest peak and the highest eve, and so, the, the peak of the highest roof will be greater than thirty feet, but the average, which is the highest peak to the highest eve, is usually a few feet lower.
We're starting at elevation ten. The ridge is up at forty-six, so it's thirty-six feet, and you get halfway from the ridge to the eve, the highest eve, and we're, we're at thirty, or twenty-nine something.
Two questions. Did I see, this, this application, there was a contemplative pool? Is that a different one?
There's no pool.
Okay.
And there's none contemplating. We've got Holly Pond.
I hear, I hear. Plenty of them on Long Lake Point.
This is not a Long Lake Point.
And then, just for the record, any kublas planned?
Um, no, yeah. I'm sorry.
You have kublas?
Hold on.
Do you want to talk about the neighbors, visits with the neighbors?
I think.
Please.
Did you have one question?
I will. Introduce yourself. Thank you.
My name is Lauren White, and I am the current resident along with my husband and our three children, Owen, Avery, and Gavin, at twenty-three Lighthouse Way. We have lived there approximately six years now, and we, when we first bought the house, it was shortly after Sandy had come through, and we were aware that FEMA was changing its guidelines and that we would be faced in the future with likely having to raise the structure. This has been a two-year process for us, going through everything and making sure that we are creating a structure that we could live in and grow in as a family, since there's going to be five adults living with it in there soon, but, and, you know, and also making sure that it fit within the neighborhood. So, I took the liberty of speaking with all of our neighbors that received a letter from Mr. Gleason's office personally, and they've all been incredibly supportive. They, those, I, I asked everybody if they wanted to see the plans. There are some that took up that opportunity. They loved what they saw, had no complaints. All their questions were answered, and then there were those that just felt confident that we were doing the right thing and that we were gonna plan something absolutely beautiful that would work well within the neighborhood. So, that's pretty much.
You're, you're probably one of the smallest houses on the street. I think there's only two left. Was your son of mine across the street?
Yes, he was. And we're also at Middlesex.
There you go.
And he's on the coast with your daughter, Kelsey.
Oh, there you go. It's a family town.
I know.
Did I, no, we talked about kublas. It's not on the plans now. You don't contemplate it.
No. Everything you see is what we planned.
You're probably done after two years, you're done.
Yes. We worked really hard to, to fit within the guidelines and not have any variances, to, you know, make sure that we're preserving the backyard as well as the neighborhood and that, you know, it was a livable family structure that worked well within the neighborhood that we were in.
Questions, Sarah and Sarah?
I, I have none.
Very good.
Does your backyard flood now during one of our bigger storms that we've just had?
So, it will. In the lower portion of it, there's a flagpole. I don't know if that's on the map or not.
I hear.
It's a what? I'm sorry?
The flagpole.
Yes, it's right here.
If you see the flagpole, that's the lowest point of elevation for our property, and the water during exceptionally high tides will come up.
You have a beach, though.
We do. It doesn't, it, it's not as if it comes up. You know, it just, it just comes over because here we have, like, a defined wall. Here, it's just more or less almost like this, this, this high. So, the water has a tendency to come there because of the shape of the property. That's just where it gathers.
Then you have no plans to burn that now to keep the water off? It's, it's kinda cool, if you ask me.
No, it's-
Tight old house.
No, it's, it's fine. We haven't had any issues. In fact, when we first saw the property right after Sandy, you could see where the water came up because it killed grass. So, there is a large brown, you know, spot sort of in here, and it never touched the house. It didn't quite come up that far, but we haven't seen anything like that since. And, but no, there's no plans other than the, the buffer that we talked about putting in, or was it right, it's on a different one?
It's on the third one.
That's what that EPC wanted?
Yeah, just, just right in here, a plantation buffer, just to help with erosion and so forth.
Cool. You're good. Karen?
And I, I appreciate that you spoke with all the neighbors, and I think that was probably a very smart thing to do. Did any of them raise any concerns or questions about, while you're FEMA compliant, you're raising over the FEMA compliant level, and, you know, while the average elevation is- and, you know, while the average elevation is well below, there are points that may be quite high. Did anyone raise any concerns about their privacy or sunlight to their house or anything, isn't like that?
No. I mean, again, we, the house next to us right here is relatively the same size of ours. The majority of the homes around us, though, are much larger than our home, especially, you know, Lily, the Stewart's house right here, it's much higher than ours. Our house should not exceed the height of that structure. And so, so no. There was no concern. We spoke with our one neighbor over here. They talked about the height of the house. We told them that this is what the plan was, and they said nothing more to say other than, "That's great."
And you're not, even though you're going high at certain points, you're not encroaching, like, you're not seeking variances on either side of the neighborhood going high and, you know, exceeding the setback?
No. We're fully within the setback perimeters, and there's, and we did that on purpose. We didn't want to have to ask for any variances. We didn't want to ask for any special favors or considerations. We wanted to make sure that this was, you know, what was a structure, that was what was allowed, that what was appropriate. And, you know, again, what sort of the trend has been in our neighborhood on the last few years that we've been there. There's been a lot of, of, we're growth.
You meant implying growth.
You're good, Kara?
Yeah, I'm good.
George?
What's up?
Jeff? And back to Jim.
Yeah, I have one question. While there's something you mentioned in passing about changes in grade along your side of the house.
Right.
My, my question really is, does that have an impact on neighbors on either side?
I thought I addressed that, but the reason, Antoine Ngung, our engineer, put in his report that it will not change significantly, alter the drainage patterns, and will have no adverse drainage impacts on neighbors. And the reason is that he designed it so there's a slight swale, depression, at the property line and in, just a foot or so inside our property. So that even though he's regrading, so the water is now directed toward the neighbors, there's actually a depression along the property line that will take that redirected flow and push it towards Holly Pond.
Great, thank you.
And we, and you should note that the houses on either side, the grades where this is happening, are a bit higher. Just, you know, it's like four, six inches, eight inches higher than our. So it works really well.
I liked his report. One, questions and answers. I think we're good up here. Anybody in the audience want to speak to this application? Seeing none. I turn and motion to close. No, I can't motion. You can motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Great. And your sons are good lacrosse players.
They can handle it.
It's one of my favorites. I don't think it makes any difference.
I'll let him have it.
Thank you. All right. Moving along. The next one we have is, for the sake of another new house change in Tokne. Jennifer?
Sure. Landfilling excavation and regrading application number four-six-four, Neil and Ann Meyer, thirty-five Sunseak Road. Proposal to regrade the property in association with reconfiguring and expansion of existing driveway, including the construction of two new retaining walls and performing related site development activities. The one point two-five acre subject property is located on the south side of Sunseak Road, approximately two hundred and seventy feet west of its intersection with Raiders Lane, and is shown on the Cessers map number sixty-two, lot number eighteen, in the R1 zone.
Okay.
Yeah, with the nature center. We say skip somebody with the nature center.
We skipped them on purpose. Okay, this looks pretty straightforward to me, too. Regrading it, putting in. You're the one that's got the, your kids are going to learn how to drive soon?
Not my kids, but the clients' kids, yeah.
Gotcha. I got that same problem. Okay, please introduce yourself. I'm sorry?
My name?
Yes, please introduce yourself.
Tara Vincenta, Artemis Landscape Architects.
Could you play your accent, please?
V-I-N-C-E-N-T-A.
Thank you. Sure.
Okay, why don't you tell us a little bit about the project?
Okay. Clients, one.
You need to stay by the microphone.
You can spin that microphone.
There's two microphones, but you need to stay by both of them. But there is a.
Is there a switch?
Pointer.
There's a pointer.
Okay. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. There we go. The clients want to create a safer circulation in an existing driveway that just is very narrow and has a very small area in the back where they can pull in and out of their garage currently. So they were looking at expanding this to be able to create some parking so that there's safer areas for drivers coming and going from their property. So in order to create that, we are, there's two existing retaining walls that are on the property now. You can see here where I'm pointing is an existing low retaining wall, and then the second existing one is right back here. What our plans are, are to take down both of these retaining walls and rebuild them. The first retaining wall would be rebuilt a little further out to make room for the parking area, and then the second wall would be built in exactly the same location as the existing wall, just extend it a little further to be able to create enough room for parking here. Are you all following that? So we, this area in between will be planted with native plants. There's very minimal grading here. At this end of the wall, we're just about meeting existing grades, and at this end of the wall, there's about no more than one to two feet of fill. So most of the filling.
How many feet of fill? You said ninety-two feet?
No, one to two, one to two. And so the, the overall amount of fill, off the top of my head, I think it's about sixty-four cubic feet.
It says sixty-two.
Sixty-two, thank you. And that goes in, and that is mostly used to backfill the walls and fill in this area to create parking.
Is that the net increase, or is that the change? Because aren't you taking out, aren't you digging out to get the traffic in?
No, actually, the existing grade will remain the same here, so we're not actually digging out much of anything. So that's mostly all just fill in that area. Some, a little bit of digging with the walls, so.
Now, I didn't see, how far are these walls supposed to be?
Three feet eleven inches.
Ah, miraculous. You'll see just below the four-foot line.
Yes.
It's the newest thing in our town. I always feel the three foot nine, three foot eleven point.
Three foot eleven, yes.
Okay.
And the grade calculations are all over here, the fill calculations?
And sometimes, Jeremy, we have designs of the walls on here. In this instance, because it's under four feet, we don't?
Right. It would not need a building permit from the building official because it's not four feet high. The last page gives a little more detail on the walls, sheet L600, which are the wall details. But it appears, based on the height of it, it would not need a building permit.
Sets it up in the upper left-hand corner. Got it.
So the details for the walls are here.
You have in the record the EPC approval?
Yeah, I was going to say that, actually. The EPC did send a letter dated September fifth. The bottom line is, I find the proposed act will have no greater than the minimum impact on wetlands, on the wetland period, and they refuse to accept it. Okay. Let's start on this side this time. George?
I'm just wondering why it appears that the off-of-the-road access portion of the driveway is made more narrow. And I wonder, for the sake of kids and fire trucks, you're making it more narrow?
It's still a very, it still remains a very wide driveway, and it exists as a very wide driveway. But in order to create the depth that we need to park a car, we needed to shift this line over literally about two feet, and then we're shifting this one over as well.
That's also because of the outcropping rock that was there?
Yes, the rock outcrop that was there as well.
So you're moving, you're moving the driveway a little bit away from the rock outcrop?
Exactly.
You know that rock?
Yeah, you're moving on both sides, I see.
Right. We're shifting.
Okay. Jeff? Kara?
Okay.
Jim?
I'm good.
Okay. Jeremy, do you have the same thing?
Nope. The only thing is, if there is any blasting needed, that would need a permit from the Fire Marshal.
Tara, did you mention that the impervious surface was to be reduced? There's currently asphalt there.
That's true, yes. Thank you. There is this area where the parking exists, this asphalt, and this is gravel. And in our description, in our notes, we talk about the fact that this whole area is now going to be gravel surface. So the, the impervious surface is greatly reduced in this area as well.
So you're using, like, pebbles?
Right, exactly.
That you're seeing there, or something like that, versus just straight black asphalt that you need trucking?
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
Last until the first snow block.
They hit the bottom. Fancy having that now. We're good up here, I think. Anybody in the audience want to speak to this application? Seeing none. I turn and motion to close. We're good. Right, Jeremy?
No others?
Second.
Over here, second. All in favor? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All righty, moving right along. One more time. We have another application on Half Mile Road by Darian Countryville. Jennifer?
Landfilling excavation regrading application number four-six-six, two Half Mile Road LLC, two Half Mile Road. Proposal to regrade yard areas more than twenty-five feet from the residence now under construction, including installation of new stormwater management system. The one point five-three acre subject property is located on the southwest corner formed by its intersection with Half Mile Road and Mansfield Avenue, and is shown on the Cessers map number two as lot number twelve in the R2 zone.
There we go. Sir? Please introduce yourself. Oh, another multiple customer here. Frequent flyer.
Justice engineer, Jim Kousidis, K-O-U-S-I-D-I-S.
Thank you.
With Kousidis Engineering LLC, representing the owners of two Half Mile Roads on the south. It's located on the southwest corner of Mansfield Avenue and Half Mile Road. There are currently, well, there are no wetlands or water bodies on the property. There's currently construction on the property for the new single-family home, associated driveway and drainage. The, the general slope of the land is from the east to west, so from Mansfield Avenue to the west along the property. Like I said, the, the owner has obtained a building permit to construct a single-family home that is under construction. The original plan that we submitted showed the minimum grading to account for the groundwater conditions for the installation of the subsurface drainage system. Basically, the drainage, the grading in the front of the prop, well, the driveway and the residence have not been modified from the original plan. So there are no increase in impervious surfaces under this application. We're only extending the fill package on the property to add a flatter area in the backyard. So driveway remains the same, the footprint remains the same, and the patio remains the same, which means that these two drainage systems that will, that will intercept the house and the driveway will remain the same, and a third smaller drainage system will receive the footing drain, the footing drain discharge from the house. So the only area, basically, that we are altering is from twenty-five feet from the back of the house to close to the southern property line. It is this area right in here that we are changing the rating, and we are seeking for your approval tonight.
Just, just to be clear, and I'm going to interrupt, but in the, this potential pool is part of the new application, was not in the old application?
That is correct.
Okay, and was the other old existing pool, was that supposed to be removed in the prior application?
Yes.
Okay. So now they're just making a flat backyard and having a site where they can put in a pool?
Right, right now, the yard is gently sloping to the west.
Gently. Hard to notice how that is.
Well, right, right off Mansfield Avenue, there's a, there's a steep drop-off about ten feet or so, and then it flattens out.
But Jennifer's right. When you go out to, Fred and I went out there last week, and it's tough to tell because they're under construction.
Yeah.
But it's gently sloping that way. So I think what Jim is trying to do here is keep the slopes going in the same direction, create a flatter area in the back where the proposed pool would be, and then going all the way back, and then keeping the slope going east-west.
Correct. And we, and we kept these grades fairly close, but they're still in the four-to-one grade, so you can cut the grass if they needed to. But at the same time, it maintains this, this slope from east to west overland in a sheet-flow fashion, so we're not concentrating the water in one area. And what I was going to say, the erosion controls are in place. I haven't been out there today, but the couple of times that I've visited the property, I didn't see any issues with the tracking mud on the street or anything. So I think they're doing a great job on that. The other feature that the owner wanted to add was a retaining wall along the driveway here.
Say it again. I'm sorry, I missed it, Jim.
There's a proposed retaining wall here along the driveway, on the, on the eastern side of the driveway. It's a foot in height, maybe it ends up being eighteen inches. It's mostly to create a plateau behind it. And some kind of, and it's for aesthetics, again, it's, it breaks up the grade as the slope comes down. It breaks up the grade between the driveway and the planted area in there. It's, again, it will, it will create a plateau on the upper side of it, on the eastern side of it, for, for planting purposes, maybe some lawn and then plant. But it, it's not there to, it could have been graded out, basically, without the retaining wall. It's mostly for aesthetics, coming out of the garage. I think it looks nice.
It's a foot to two feet high.
Yes. It's not, it's not a major retaining wall.
Right. Okay, there's some underground tank. So we're not really adding any too much additional cul-de-sacs from the prior application. We're just flattening out the backyard?
Yeah, we're not adding any, any more drainage. We received a letter from the engineering department that they are on board with our application. I haven't seen any negative comments from planning and zoning staff either.
Glad you're here now about something construction versus come back two years. Okay, I'm pretty much good. Anything on this side?
I guess my only question is, I know you're close to a school in that area.
Okay.
And so will any of this, the retaining wall and changing the grading and, you know, there is already an in-ground pool, but maybe a new in-ground pool when there's already an in-ground pool and changing the grading, will that have any effect on the school or public land in the area or?
It should not, no. No, it will not. It still maintains historic flows from east to west. We're not changing the flow pattern.
I have nothing.
Jim? Good. George? Good? Is anybody in the audience want to speak to this application? I just like looking on your stuff. Okay, Jeremy, will we say anything?
Nope, that covers it.
Okay, I turn and motion to close.
Okay.
Grab a motion over here. Have a second.
All in favor?
All in favor? I think the second came from George Wright.
Got it.
Yes, he did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Enjoy the rest of your day.
You, too. Right along. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. Deliberate, the next thing on our agenda is deliberation on any public hearings that we've closed tonight. I would like to close out some of these things. Do we have to close out all of them? What, for the, for the new people, what we do now is we deliberate about the applications, help Jeremy and Fred with either a positive or a negative, anything we want to see, anything they want to highlight, and then the next meeting, he'd come back with a draft. and then the next meeting, come back with a draft. We typically don't do that the same night of the applications, but night's not, today's not typical. And it's only nine-ten, and John Sealy's not here.
These folks are representing Ms. Hoffman. So they just wanted to hear the deliberations on the Hoffman matter.
Who is the Hoffman matter?
That's the second two...
All right, let's, let's help these people, see if we raise them home. Uh, let me look at my front here. Okay, so seven fifty-seven Boston Post Road is where they want to convert the second floor back to its original state as an apartment upstairs. There's no parking issue. They're under lowering parking. They're going to have their new fancy front door and new back door. The outside house is not going to change. I think the outside house looks beautiful today. I have no issues, I think it's a great idea.
Sounds good.
Agreed.
Okay, anything we missed?
No.
Okay.
You want us to draft a resolution reflecting the commission's...
Positive report to be able to convert that...
At the next meeting, either next week or the week after.
To be able to get the second floor back to an apartment the way it was.
Got it.
Okay. While we're on the Boston Post Road, let's go to eight ninety-five Boston Post Road.
Is that the hair salon?
That's a hair salon?
Yep.
Bella Petra was a plumbing bathroom. I don't know if they have kitchen stuff in there, but they have their bathroom stuff. That store got split in half. To the left side is Big Shots, right? And to the right side is vacant today. The applicant wants to put in a new hair salon with five chairs, I think three stylists. Maybe, and one of the stylists would also be the receptionist. They'll have some retail on the front of the property. Good night, thank you.
Night.
It's a nice retailer, should be like to do that. There's, in my mind, there's plenty of parking in the back. There's plenty of public parking in the back. Does anybody else have any comments, concerns, questions? Okay, I got a lot of nodding heads as a yes. So that looks like that's a positive report. Let's go up to the top, to Retro Road. Town wants to put in a big, huge... Give me a hard go. Wants to bring a big, huge generator in so when power gets out...
Giant loud generator.
Power goes out, Jeremy gets to keep his lights on. We've approved these at the library, at the police station, at every single school. I think we're good, right?
And, and could it, wouldn't that like double then usage here if like you have to make it a cooling center? Or like, would that increase usage of a public building if, God forbid, you had to?
It's, when we designed the Mathers Center way back when, it's when the, all the stuff was happening in schools where, at the high school, when it was, that one year, there was a bunch of hurricanes, and everyone lost power. They set up shelters at the high schools, but you have to have the high school permission to be able to go into the property. So when we did the Mathers Center, the master plan was when they put it, and you see the picture of people sleeping in cots, is to put them here.
Yeah.
So that's what this is going to do.
A huge amount of sense.
Yep.
To like have public buildings have power, if, you know...
That we control and border the kitchen. No issues?
The, it's comparable to the size of the police headquarters, Jeremy?
It is. Ed mentioned to me that the library or police, very similar in size, except theirs are right out in the open, and theirs are on a platform. Here it'll be...
Must be why they, they look bigger. They look big anyway.
They do look big. And here it'll be behind a wall, behind some trees, and lower in the ground. So although you'll drive past it all the time, eh, you probably won't see it.
Transformer there right now, but you can't see. I will venture to say that the...
Will it impact neighbors in terms of like, will it run all the time or just run?
It's one test seven thirty a.m., thirty minutes the same time as it always been.
Exactly.
Very good.
Yeah, and then if, obviously, if power goes out, we've all been in town where everybody's got their generators going. But Jennifer's right, it'll be tested one, Ed has to test it once a week in off-hours when most employees don't care.
And the new state-of-the-art generators are very, very quiet.
There's acoustic walls around to, to reduce the noise impacts as well.
So I think we're good? That gets two thumbs up?
Yep.
I think the Camp Avenue deck in the backyard is pretty straightforward. Want to talk about that one? You want to talk about it? You want to approve it?
Yeah, let's do it.
You got another positive? Nature Center we passed on, Post Road we did, Post Road we did. Twenty-three Lighthouse Way. People are going to tear down a very, very old house that's outdated and lived its useful life. A new house that's all compliant with current zoning regulations, setback regulations, height regulations, no variances, no nothing. State-of-the-art. Any questions?
Did you talk to all the neighbors, anyone?
If any, just so you know, all the neighbors get noticed.
No, I know, and like...
Trust me, if they don't like it, they'll be here.
Right, yeah.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah.
That's another positive report, Jeremy? Okay, nine nineteen on your FM dial. Thirty-five Cedric Suns, Sunswick, Maine, in Tokonee. The family has two kids, they're going to start driving cars. They want to widen their driveway. They moved it to the left, they're going to lower the impervious surface, which is helpful. I think we got a good, did we get a, a EPC report on that one, too?
We did. EPC approved it.
EPC approved it. Any questions, any concerns? Did we get another five nods, yes?
Great.
Because even if we look at the driveway now, it's still wide enough.
It's really wide, yeah.
Yeah. I did then notice that the other side is wider as well.
Great, they're just shifting it to the left, so it's a wide, it's a wider turnaround that big rock that's sitting there.
It's not a narrow driveway per se, but it's one of those driveways that if you make a wrong move, you're going over the cliff, so to speak. There's these walls which are...
With kids, yeah.
Yeah, and then...
It's close, yeah. Well, they, they'd say it's Tokonee.
They'd say Tokonee, too. I live up by the Oxford School.
But it's like that rocky part where like if you don't do it, then you're like, your car's on a rock.
It's Delphill Island.
Yes, it is.
But it's still kind of like rocky.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're good with that?
Yep.
Yeah, we can eat. Next, Half Mile Road, our man Jim. He's a good guy. He just doesn't have a hundred percent perfect record, but he's pretty good. They're now, they're flattening out their backyard, which everybody has after they start building the house. They come back, go, ooh, we have a hilly backyard. This guy's actually coming in early to tell us we have a flat backyard.
It's not even that hilly.
It isn't very hilly, it's just, this will give it... It's just sloping that way, and then they created this, what will be a flat area, and then they'll change, continue the sloping towards the west.
And then they're going to have, they're going to put in a new pool.
Right.
Or have the potential to put a nice pool in the middle of it. That little rock wall is inconsequential.
Correct.
I didn't see any issues with that at all. Anybody else have concerns, questions? Nope. I have another five nodding heads. That's a positive report. I think that gets everything. Okay? Next, approval of minutes. We got a couple lawyers, we have two new lawyers on the, on the team now, reading every word. Thank God, we're back to having a lawyer. I lost my minutes.
So vice chairman, vice needs to go in front of...
Everybody wants to make sure I was not the chairman at the beginning of the meeting.
Yep, we'll make that change, which is right there, Fred.
Vice chairman.
Vice chairman at the start, and then he became chairman down here. Right there. Any other changes?
I had none.
Somebody corrected me when I, I had a third volume, I was shocked, and corrected me when I was ignoring as to where the rear of the building was. Thank you for that.
Okay. Any other changes to the minutes? Okay, the motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Over second? Second, raise a favor?
What was the second?
Uh, Jim, I'm sorry, George. Okay? Okay. The next thing on our agenda, we're going to... Other business? The only, if I could, give me another business for thirty seconds?
Yeah.
Do you motion to approve other business? All in favor, yes, good. The only two things that I have on other business was, I just want you guys to know, Seven Cedric, that proposed house or apartment, building, twenty unit apartment building, they went, they went to ARB. ARB sent out a letter, they were not very pleased with it. I did see one of the guys at ARB. They sent the guy back to the drawing board. I was told by a guy from ARB that it went from twenty units down to eighteen.
They, because when they left the meeting here, they then met with Fred and I the next day or two days later, and the sense we got from the commission was twenty was not going to fly. Having the building right on the road wasn't going to fly. I said, look, sixteen units, eighteen, you're going to have to reduce the number of units. You have to make the building smaller. You're really going to have to listen to ARB. There's going to have to be a lot of changes made. I think a lot of the ARB comments are very similar to the comments you all made. Make it a more visible front, so you know where the entrance is. Reduce the number of curb cuts, so you don't have that curb cut right near the stop sign.
So the bottom line is, that might not go anywhere.
More green, open space on the property. It essentially comes down to, to a redesign of the site.
I'll give you one sentence out of here, and then we can redisc. Seven Cedric Avenue is set in our downtown on a one-story, single rotary, or early, single rotary, steps away from our National Register Historic District and our Historic Society voting. So furthermore, here, Mark, it's two-hundredth anniversary, so... The only other item was, we talked about at one meeting, sixteen West Elm.
Oh, yes.
They did their building, I guess somebody approved that, they got their TCMO because somebody approved the wall that the building official said.
Right, this Mr. Lesko, you recall, he got approval for grading. The grading wasn't done properly. He had to come back for the commission, Craig Flaherty represented him. So he was able to give the building official the required certification that the building official needed. We just issued the temporary CO earlier today. It's a one-year temporary, and we relayed to Mr. Lesko, you need to come back and give staff that certification that the wall is A-OK next July. And then you get your permanent CO.
So that's, he's, he got a CO, so...
Temporary CO.
Temporary CO. That's all I had.
Why did I get the ten Spring Grove Street in my package?
That happens every once in a while. You get, you get special things, and you're missing special things.
I think, George, that was one that was going to go ahead. They didn't get all the mailings done. So we've spoken to the owner, they'll be up on October twenty-second.
You'll probably get another one.
So hang on to that.
I stood over an hour.
Nine twenty-four. I would have to motion to close.